Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out to a regular meeting of the Board of Education. It's Monday, March 28th, 2022. It is 6:06 PM. Let the record show that all board members are present. If you would, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board, before each of you, you have an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter, any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. First up this evening, we have recognitions. Dr. Glass.
Thank you. Tonight, we say farewell to one of our longtime leaders in the room. Jeff Glenn was first elected to serve on the Cape Girardeau Public School Board in 2013. He has been the board president, vice president, served on numerous state boards, committees throughout the year. As many of you know, Jeff decided this would be his final year on the board. He is going to be surely missed. He and his wife Tracy have two sons who are Cape Central graduates, so even if he's no longer with us on the board, Cape Girardeau Public Schools will always hold a special place in the hearts of the Glenn family. Jeff, thank you. Thank you for giving your time and talents over the last nine years to this district. I realize it's a thankless job and that you could have been playing a lot more golf.
Amen to that.
But on behalf of all the students and staff of the Cape Girardeau Public School District, again, thank you and wish you the very best.
Can we get a picture?
Absolutely, yeah.
You don't mind having to use this.
I might use it.
Thank you, always. And I guess we'll go ahead and segue right on in. It's that time of year, again, that we pause and say thank you to our dedicated school board members. Every single one of these school board members that you see up here with me tonight volunteer countless hours of time away from their own families to help strengthen our school district. These public servants are elected by local constituents and do not receive any compensation for their tireless work each and every year. I ask those in the room, join me in giving our board members a round of applause. Thank you to each and every one of my school board members. I appreciate all your support and all the hard work that you've given to this district. All right, let me flip the page here. The main event. We are very honored to have one of the best basketball teams in the state with us here tonight. Cape Central High's boys' basketball made a trip to the Class V Elite Eight this season. On their way to the state quarterfinals, the Tigers claimed a Class V District One title. They finished up the extremely tough CMO Conference in second place with a 6-2 record in conference play. CHS finished the year with an overall record of 22-6, ranked ninth in the final in Missouri Basketball Coaches Association Poll Ranking of the Year. Cameron Williams garnered All-State, All-District, All-Conference honors, while John Brantner was named All-District and All-Conference Honorable Mention. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me and give a warm welcome to Coach Church and our Cape Central High Tigers. Coach, if there's anything you want to say, or the players, for that matter?
Yeah, I'm sure they'd really like it. I don't have a ton to say, just, you know, thank you for this recognition. This group was a lot of fun to coach. You know, every day they came in and where you can have a team where you don't have to coach effort every day, you know, they go hard. And with all the success they had and the championships they won, that's wonderful, but I was really probably more proud of the way they acted off the court and the way they represented not only Cape Central, but the city of Cape Girardeau, just in a great way. We have three guys that aren't here, or four guys, we have some guys playing baseball tonight. We have two seniors, Kim Harris. And John Brantner, he's playing baseball, and the rest of them are coming back. And we can have some high expectations for not only next year, but the future. Thank you, guys, for having us.
Thank you, Coach. And I tell you what, Coach is exactly right. He just jogged a memory in my head. About a month ago, I received a letter from an unsolicited letter from a travel staff up the road somewhere, but the attendant took time out to comment on you guys when you guys stopped there on how respectful and how much she appreciated serving you all because how respectful you were to them. For someone to take time out and send me a letter in that respect, it just speaks volumes to me, guys. Thank you very, very much.
All right, we'll get a picture. Act like we like each other. All right, thanks, guys.
All right, next up, Terrific Tigers. We are pleased, very pleased, to recognize our March Terrific Tigers. These are students from each of our buildings that have been selected to receive this award based on their service to others, their leadership, and their scholarship. Parents, we also know that you work hard, so we want to recognize you for all you do too. So as we call each student forward, would you stand and be recognized?
Alma Schrader Elementary, Jenny Lee, third grade daughter of Xinju and Zhu Jiali. Jenny is a wonderful student. She works extremely hard and is a joy to teach. Jenny is also a very kind young lady. She shows kindness to all students. She's a wonderful student to have at Alma Schrader. Congratulations, Jenny. Blanchard Elementary, Muhammad Ali, third grade son of Sarish Dabb and Sajad Ali. Someone who possesses all of the unique traits of a Terrific Tigers, Muhammad Ali. Muhammad is a leader and a role model in the classroom, and he sets a standard for, high for his peers. Muhammad is attentive in class, follows instructions immediately, takes pride in his work, is persistent on all tasks, and strives to do his best. Congratulations on such an amazing honor, Muhammad.
Awesome. Awesome, thank you.
Clifford Elementary, Ibrahim Ali, fourth grade son of Mubin Fatima and Wakas Azam. Ibrahim Ali is an exceptional student. He's always very respectful, kind, and considerate to his teachers and peers. He always tries his hardest and sets a great example on how to follow Clifford's expectations at all times. Ibrahim is a great example of a Terrific Tiger. Franklin Elementary, Mahala Brooks, first grade daughter of Ivy Brooks. Mahala is an exceptional student in every aspect. She has all the characteristics of a Terrific Tiger. She's a hard-working student who always tries her best and is a role model to others. Mahala has a kind heart and a gentle nature that her peers are drawn to. She makes our school proud each and every day. Jefferson Elementary, Marian Garcia, pre-K daughter of Grace Garcia and Pedro Garcia. Marian is a hard-working student and an awesome friend. She's loving and helpful and plays well with all of her friends. She's kind and loves to learn. Marian is a wonderful student to have at Jefferson Elementary. Central Middle School, Chloe Sheridan, sixth grade daughter of Lauren Collins Sheridan. Chloe is an amazing student who pushes herself to continuously stay organized and focused. She always has a smile on her face and a willingness to help carry out tasks needed. Chloe, continue to roar as you continue to grow. Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, Kishon Boyd, eighth grade son of Tony Boyd. Kishon is a role model to the other gentlemen in our school. He is polite, responsible, and full of integrity. Kishon is definitely a great role model for the students at Terry W. Kitchen Junior High School. Keep up the great work, Kishon. Central High School, Jackson Rutston, twelfth grade son of Martha and Mark Preston. Central Academy, Janiah Brand, tenth grade daughter of Crystal Dupree. We got a couple from last month. Blanchard Elementary, Katyn's Pullitt, daughter of Kendra and Alan Pullitt. And then Terry W. Kitchen Junior High, Delonte Bailey, eighth grade son of Ramona Bailey. Delonte is a leader. He enthusiastically participates and helps others. His positive attitude is infectious. Congratulations, Delonte, and keep up the great work.
All right, everybody look this way for us. Yep, big smiles.
We have eighth graders together.
Yes.
Just put the eighth graders in. All right, so that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Next up, we have information proposals or comments from the audience. I don't believe we had anything this month, so we'll move on to our informational reports. First up is the board president's report. So March is always kind of a bittersweet month for a couple of different reasons. Usually, it means the conclusion of the last meeting of being board president. And also, there's always that opportunity that the board is going to change, which we know is going to be the case because Mr. Jeff is stepping down. So I just wanted to thank him for his service and his leadership throughout the years. Appreciate it. It's been good working with you. We'll see you around on the golf course tomorrow.
Right back at you.
Also, just want to thank the board for the opportunity to serve as president this year. It's been a challenging year, but there's a lot of rewards to things that we're doing right now and that the district is definitely in a good position to move forward to successfully educate all of our students, so just appreciate that opportunity. Also want to thank Matt for serving as vice president this year. I appreciate your leadership and your service.
Appreciate it.
Also want to thank Matt for being board secretary. We appreciate all your hard work. I know it takes a lot to keep this group in line and make sure we're following all the rules we're supposed to follow and getting out all the emails and everything posted when they're supposed to be, so thank you for that. Really appreciate it. And want to thank Casey and Dr. Fegley for serving as our legislative delegate representatives for the year. I know it's not always the most glamorous positions, but it does serve a purpose and we appreciate the updates each month, so thank you for that. And Dr. Glass, it's been a pleasure serving with you this year.
Pleasure's all mine, sir.
So I appreciate the leadership that you offer and I appreciate all the hard work that your administration puts in. And just want to remind people that April 5th is the next vote election. Just encourage everyone to get out and to do that, just from the standpoint that that's the way we get our voices heard and to put people in place that will lead us in the right direction. Several votes coming up. We have two board positions available. We have a mayororal race going on as well, as well as several other city council positions, and I believe there's one health board position open, so it's a lot of potential change going on, so just want to remind everybody April 5th, get out and vote. And with that, I will conclude my last board president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
Next up, we have...
Yep, go ahead. No, I was going to jump right into superintendent.
We have a superintendent's report up, so...
And my report was board recognition, and again, I want to say thank you for all the hours that you guys put in going above and beyond for our students and this community. So thank you.
Appreciate that. Next up, we have our academic services report.
That is Mr. Moyers. Come on down.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out. Baseball game, I have good news, we won 4-2. God, this is Dr. Fegley's good mobile pitch personally.
First pitch, yeah.
The guys are going to sign your baseballs and we'll get them back to you as soon as they get those done.
Awesome.
So Ms. Towns is going to go through the presentation here. I know you guys have seen some of this, but also that she put it in a much better, nicer-looking manual that you could look at as well. So I'm just going to go through that. I'm not going to read everything, obviously, but I'm going to hit some high points and things that I think are important for you guys to know. First, we believe athletic participation can be a total, excuse me, can be a tool to increase attendance, academic achievement, while also reducing unwanted behaviors in our school. There's no argument against what life lessons athletic participation can provide. It is a proven pathway to success in the classroom and after students graduate. I think everybody here can agree that athletics is a great pathway for success. So how do we achieve that here in Cape Public Schools? First, I believe we establish partnerships within our community to break down those barriers to participation because they are numerous in our community. I think Cape Parks and Recreation, corporate partnerships, grants and aid outside of our community are all ways that we can achieve those goals. We must build systems to increase participation and school pride, as well as work within the systems we already have in place. Secondly, our vision, this is a bold vision that we put forth here, but I do believe it's one that is attainable. Our goal is to create doers. I've been lucky to work with a couple Hall of Fame football coaches, and one of them, when we turned the tide at the last school I was at, that's one of the things he said. He said, "We've created doers here. The doers have taken over the school." All right? And what he meant by that was not just the coaches and the teachers, because most of those people are already doers. It's the kids. Once we've created that culture of doing and being active, those are the leaders of your school. They create the culture that we want in our schools. Doers have more skin in the game, right? They're invested with time and energy. It means something to them. Being a Tiger is important to them, all right? At the high school level, some of our coaches use the popular phrase, "The Tiger Way." That culture and sense of community must begin at the elementary level for it to be sustainable. We have to begin it there. We talk about culture, the Tiger pride that we want to instill in our kids, it has to begin at lower levels than when they get to the high school or junior high. Our rationale, I meet with a group of men on Wednesdays, and the leader of that group always asks me, "Do you know your why?" All right? Do you know why you're here, what you're doing? The extrinsic motivation for this is what? Skill development, right? Team building, sportsmanship, winning. Those are the things that are extrinsic, the outside looking in. But the things that are more important to me, I believe, and again, you can look at the rationale and see all the things that are possible with this program, but I also believe the intrinsic motivation is self-work, giving our kids ability to help them with the area of self-esteem. Mental health, a huge part of what athletics can provide, that outlet for some of the problems that they're going through. And the people that they can be around, the coaches that they can lean on, okay? Belonging, being a part of the team, all right? We all long to be part of the team, all right? And I think that's going to help as well as we start this process. And again, lifelong fitness, right? Having the ability to know what that means, those sports that go past high school. Next is more of the how, how are we going to do these things? The K through 2 basic skill level, all right? Basically, an introduction of each sport to our youngest as they come in. And those will be those basic skills that align with our physical education, grade-level expectations. We want these to be developmentally appropriate, especially for these ages, making sure that the kids are ready to learn these things, right? So K through 2 is an important, obviously, for basic skills. Intramurals, next slide. Intramurals during the school day integrated with our PE curriculum. The PE teacher will be able to teach these skills throughout their day as they come to their classrooms, and then we will be able to involve our high school students with officiated coaching during a lunch period intramural program, where they are actually getting to start to compete amongst each other within their classmates. Now, as you know, growing up, what was one of the greatest things you got to do? You didn't enjoy math class, you didn't even like lunch that much, but you sure as heck liked PE, right? Or you enjoyed recess, right? Going out and being able to be on a team and play kickball or dodgeball or whatever, right? So we're creating this program within the schools to be able to give them that outlet. Well, I'll tell you from someone who's been in the classroom, it's been a while, but someone who's been in the classroom, those outlets create students that want to come in and learn, all right? They get some of that energy out, right? That might be towards something negative instead of, and we can make it towards a positive. We also want to involve CMO students who are interested in coaching. When we create those partnerships with CMO, say, "Hey, what kids do you know that are interested in being a teacher or a coach? Well, let's get them involved in our intramural programs where they can be in front of kids, they can learn those skills." Extracurricular. This is where the partnership with Cape Parks and Rec is vital. Establishing teams within our own school buildings that can participate in the already-established leagues where they exist. Partner with other outside organizations where those leagues do not exist. For example, golf, tennis, we would be able to, I'll just give you the example, our tennis coach has already approached me, our new tennis coach, she's like, "Hey," she played in USDA growing up, all right? She's from the Columbia, Rock Ridge areas. It's like, "Hey, I really want to bring USDA in Cape." I said, "Amen, let's do it." Look, what resources can I put in front of you to be able to do that? And she said, "Coach, I pretty much know everybody in the Midwest in the USDA program." Awesome. So she's creating those partnerships already to be able to bring those programs here, which is awesome. I just gave the example, trying to give you the example of what extracurriculars should look like. Again, we're the infancy of this, and I haven't developed, fully developed what it will look like within each sport because it will be different for each sport. Let's just take baseball, for example. If we have baseball, softball, however you want to cut it, so let's say we have, I don't know, 75 kids. Kristy, you tell me how many's in Clifford Elementary's third grade?
About 75.
75 kids, so half of those are probably girls, half of those are boys, if we're just guessing here, right? So somewhere in a 35, 36, 37 number of kids, half those kids really want to participate. We put that opportunity in front of them, so you have a baseball team in the third grade from Clifford Elementary. The idea is to play a baseball team from Jefferson and from Franklin and from Blanchard. Play those schools within our school district, all right? Not only does it create that camaraderie within our district, because we're playing against each other, but also within your own school, so you can have that pride. One of the coolest things I think we do as a district is when our high school kids get to go back to their elementaries and walk the halls the day after, at the end of the day. Now, I think this just adds to that, right? And again, tennis is different, golf's different, really all of our sports are different. So then you take those, that example, you say, baseball, basketball, however you want to soccer, however you want, whatever sport you want to talk about, at the end of that rec season, essentially, you then be able to take all the team members, say, in basketball, we might have two or three teams. So all the best kids from those, that third grade will get to play the other schools another game, right? And then you pick the best third graders across the district and you go play other schools, whether that be some of our larger schools or some of our smaller communities in the area. All right, so it's a pyramid of teams that will be able, that they'll be able to participate more, okay, than they already are. The next slide, this has been, the junior high, high school aspect of this, this has been a point of emphasis for our coaching staffs at the high school and junior high levels, but just to be honest, we're not where we need to be. We're just not there yet, all right? And more of an effort to establish or fine-tune the plans that some of our coaches have put in place will make this partnership better. It has to. Because part of this is as we bring these kids up, there needs to be continuity of our programs, understanding what they need to be taught at the elementary level through the junior high level all the way into high school. Community. School-centered community events are important to the establishment of our Tiger pride, all right? We want, the more people we have at our events, the better, all right? We want to bring our community in and have them be a huge part of our partnership as well. How do we do that? Alumni association is something that we, Chris and I have talked about a lot, and also with the foundation with Amy, about making sure that we're getting information out to our alumni and creating that association so that they'll come to our events. They got to know where, when they are, and where they are before they'll come. Our Hall of Fame has to be reestablished, and Chris and I will work together on reestablishing that as well. You guys have heard us talk about restoring the roar, and just to be honest, it hasn't got off the ground yet, all right? I hope to help with our community partners, with our volunteers, really take that program to new heights. The next, fundraising, recruiting. How do we make it easy for groups to donate, all right? That's what we have to look at, all right? We have to find ways, not only partnerships within the... We have to find ways, not only partnerships within the community, but ways that they can donate, whether that's time, talent, or treasure, okay? So those are the things that we'll be looking at as well. People want to be part of something bigger than themselves, it's just an innate nature, right? So why can't they be a part of our Cape Public School system? Coaches, the recruiting part. Guys, you're not beating down doors, come coach. More coaches are exiting the profession than are entering, all right? And that goes, as our administrators know, that goes for teachers as well, all right? Too many people are leaving and not enough coming in, all right? So this program allows us, if we see, if we find a coach at a lower level as they come up, we'll be able to recognize, "Hey, this guy's done a really good job, this gal's done a really good job." We need to find a way to get them into our system as they go up, right? Finally, the budget, it really is going to depend on the partnerships that we can create, all right? How we create those partnerships with Cape Parks and Rec and through our corporate sponsorships as well. Timelines, I know Dr. Glass has told you about the exact, specific timelines. Again, those are going to be established as these meetings go on with Cape Parks and Rec and with our elementary principals and middle school principals as we move on. That's all I got. You got any questions?
Not a question, just a comment. Several years ago, we made it to the state championship game in football and played Web City and gave them a real run for their money for the powerhouse that they are in high school football. And one of the things that I learned while we were at that game was that their youth football leagues run the high school offense. And so those kids are getting exposed to that at a very young age. And so by the time they walk in the door as freshmen, they don't have to learn the offense. They already know it. Now it's just a matter of executing. That's how you create a powerhouse. That's how you create a dynasty program and I love what you guys are looking to do with this. I think that this is a real opportunity for us.
That's also an example of that. Coach Rod Reek, who's also the AD there, one of the things within his program, he interviews each individual youth coach that comes through his program. And the way once he runs that to make sure that those coaches are held accountable of what they're supposed to do. So it is a fascinating way.
I'm excited about this too. I would just say, in addition to this athletic part of this, I think the bigger vision is, you know, taking kids in our district who right now aren't participating but could really use the adult mentorship and role models and kind of people pouring into teaching life skills and the idea of achievement and self-worth. And I think that's worth its weight in gold. And I think the fact is, when we do this well, we're going to find we're more competitive on the athletic fields, but I think we're going to find we're more competitive in the field of life, which I think is what we're really here for. And so I think it's a win-win. So excited to have you in this new leadership role for sure.
I appreciate that. Let me tell you, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate your trust in me, the faith that you've put in place in me to start this program because I'm really excited about it.
I'd like to echo, I know we've talked about this, but I just think it's a huge opportunity for our community as well to also get more and more involved, whether that's sponsoring a student athlete and attending their games at the elementary level. I mean, I think that's phenomenal and they may be the only people that show up to cheer that, you know, little kid on. You know, if parents are working two jobs and there's an after-school game, the sponsor could come attend. And I think it's just a whole nother level of community involvement that, you know, this may last all the way. Talk about restoring the roar and attendance and all kinds of fun stuff. You may have, you know, community members that follow these students all the way through high school and really just want to cheer them on as individuals and students. So I'm very excited about this.
You know, we're talking about athletics, but the academic impact is going to be a huge thing as well because...
Attendance?
Well, just if you're required to maintain a specific GPA or if you have to go to school the day that you, you know, are going to play or whatever, kids are more apt to, if they're enjoying what they're doing, they're more apt to be doing the things that allow them to do that. And so that's going to be a huge component. And plus, as you go through it, especially as you get older, the whole time management portion of it. I mean, it's a proven fact that student athletes are better at managing their time because they've got academics that they're responsible for, but then they have practice and all the other things that they have to do, to get in before they go to bed, when they get up in the morning. So it's going to make a huge impact on our district. It's not going to be overnight, but it'll take some time. But like Jeff said, you know, if you want to be competitive in whatever you do, it takes time and effort and energy to make that commitment. And not just a commitment on the student's part, but on the administration, the school board, everybody involved. And, you know, community like you're talking about.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. If you could get a business that's going to sponsor a group of kids at a school, they're more apt to come out and watch them, you know, perform, whatever. If they're vested in that program, then community participation definitely goes up.
It's very exciting.
So we appreciate you putting all this together and looking at your new position.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
All right, next up we have our Community Teachers Association report. Good evening.
Good evening. So we switched a little bit from, we were doing the building shout-outs, but then we were thinking since we're a teachers association, we really, excuse me, wanted to focus on the staff and the teachers. So we had a lot to name, so sorry, it might take a couple minutes, but I think it's important to give these people recognition. At Elmer Schrader, Joni Edmondson always goes above and beyond to cover someone's duty and do a drop sub every time she can. At Blanchard, Tara Bova is the social media superstar. Their Facebook page is always filled with amazing updates, graphics, and eye-catching posts. Jessica Patton-Gill is the queen of the chili supper and silent auction, which is tons and tons and tons of work and was an amazing success with three exclamation points. Laura John is an incredible organizer and leader and she has an amazing way of keeping mini balls in the air at the same time. At Central Office, shout-out to Stephanie Ellinger, Casey Cox, Amy McDonald, and all EduCare staff and interns. Tina Wright, Willa DeBrook, Anne Flick, Joetta Giles, Heather Dickerson, all elementary counselors, along with some of our retired teachers and nurses, a lot of people, for making our kindergarten roundup a huge success during the week of March 21st. And shout-out to Leslie Chick for always going above and beyond. The Friday we had snow late in the afternoon. I missed that. Left after five o'clock to go home and she had cleaned the snow off of her windshield. And when she was out sick for a few days, she watered the plants in her office. She is a true joy giver. At Clifford, our high school, if I'm pronouncing correctly. Our staff is all amazing and is so quick to fill in while we've been shorthanded. Mr. Mike, our custodian, not only works double time, but also sanitized our school on Friday because we had a lot of fealty sickness. So while all the teachers were out doing community service, he sanitized everything for us. And Ms. Erhan and Ms. Poyer and all of our front office staff go above and beyond to fill in when our principal, Ms. Emma Darfur, is out and we really could not function without our central, our office staff. At the Career and Technology Center, Mary Kinney is our vocational research educator and has been for eighteen years. This is her thirtieth year in education. She goes above and beyond her job description. She helps with the magnitude of activities done here at the CTC from making sure all faculty turn in their accreditation paperwork, a massive amount of documentation, to organizing the career and technical education appreciation luncheon. She helps with the National Technical Honor Society and coordinates our professional development each year. I'm sure I miss many more things that she does outside of her normal routine and she is nice to everyone. Big day. At the high school, Linda Davis has been working hard with her students as they have prepared for contests. And Ms. Patty Wumble spends endless hours with our cheerleaders, making sure they know their cheers and attending all football games and basketball games. At the junior high, Michael Bascusco, the media specialist, does way more than his job description demands. He analyzes data for our building departments, fills in for the tech department when needed, creates presentations for our classes anytime we ask. He is creative, innovative, and always learning new things, just to name a few. Terry Bryan Sped does a lot to support all of our students. She tutors both morning and afternoon tutoring sessions, steps up for our hometown students while also leading her department diligently, all with a smile and encouraging word for all those around her. And at the middle school, Brooks Bradshaw is a sixth-grade teacher. Brooks is my teammate at the middle school. He has been an awesome teammate and there when I need him the most. I had to be out unexpectedly and he made sure everything went smoothly. Such an awesome coworker and friend. Vanessa, the secretary, wow, this lady is such a positive person. Every morning she goes around our building checking on staff. She is always telling others to keep that smile on. It's always a good day when she shows her smile to the building. Thank you for all that you do. And the entire middle school Sped department. This team of teachers and parents goes above and beyond for our students each and every day. It is incredibly special to watch the interactions they have with their students and the love they show them. Our students are blessed. Emily Hill puts a hundred ten percent into her Sped kids every day. She is amazing. Tiffany Mead is one of the best humans on this planet. She is a mentor to our fifth and sixth-grade girls, imporses her time, energy, patience, and love into helping each of our girls be more successful. Diana Valero is a rare treasure. She is the teacher to our gifted students, but she does that and so much more. For many years, she has spearheaded our community service projects and our bilking. She is such a selfless and giving person, always thinking of others. I'm sorry, it makes me a little emotional. As you guys know, this year has been really hard. So we felt like it was really important to honor people that are working really hard and I know that took a little of your time, but thank you guys for everything that you do for us. We really appreciate all that you've done to step up and show us that you care. If there's anything you ever need from me, please here, if you have any questions.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
That was awesome.
Next up, we have our Treasurer Finance Report.
Yep. In Ms. Dudek's absence, I will deliver the finance report. Fund balance report always looks good this time of year for the month ending February. We have a beginning fund balance in February of nineteen million, nineteen point five. We took in three point nine million in revenues, one point one in expenses. We had a one point five transfer. So we had an ending fund balance of twenty point eight million. Total of all funds collectively, forty-one million. Like I said, always a great time of year to look at the fund balance sheet. We have the cash investment detail listed below. Any questions on the financial report?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have our Board Reports. First up, MSBD Delegate Report.
I don't have any things specific, just there's a lot of education-related bills being discussed. So it's important to pay attention to what's going on there and I know you'll say this too. There's an election coming up, so we need a vote.
And then there's a, as you said, there's a whole lot of, read your legislative voice, there's lots of stuff since now that Jeff's leaving, they're putting in the Board Member Recall is one of the things. They missed their chance. That'll be an interesting one.
Was that a missed opportunity?
It was. But there's moral turpitude and a lot of different things that could come into play. So there's a whole lot of really... No, I mean, it's under attack, left and right. So there's lots of really adventurous things going on in the legislature. So see what shakes out of it. So again, stay educated yourselves, read, learn, talk. And they did, if you guys need about, this one was a really fun one, the recall ones. They did send that out.
I did read that one.
MSBD is really good about sending out those alerts when things are coming up.
One of the things that's really hot right now is open enrollment. That's one that I've been listening to every week. We have a webinar with our lobbyists talking about how much traction open enrollment gets and basically what that means for the district is that we could, if a student wants to attend one of the outlined school districts, they could, as long as the receiving district is open to that. So I anticipate that this will cause a lot of hardship for a lot of different districts if this passes. So we're trying to get the word out, to try to talk to our senators on this because that's where it's at right now. And very important that we make our voice heard, that open enrollment is not good for public education. It's going to be a real, real hardship for a lot of the smaller school districts. You know, they lose ten, fifteen students and they're closing their doors. And some people think that that's what this is intended for, is forced consolidation. It's kind of a backdoor in order to do that, so. Just kind of stay tuned, if you've got an ear, use it.
Anything else? Cape Public School Foundation, you have anything?
I really, I really don't have much, but I have not been in front of you guys in a while because of Penguin Party. The Penguin Party raised over eighty-three thousand dollars. We raised seven thousand for Rising Educator Program this summer. We're short probably about eight thousand for that program, but I'm confident we will be receiving more donations. We received seven thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars for special needs at Clifford Elementary and I'm working with Clifford and Mandy Keys with that donation and so we have that. And then in August, we will be doing a back-to-school activity week kickoff, Tiger Pride, Restore the Roar. We will have something starting with the first day of school, August 24th, fundraising event, something fun for the kids to do. And then we'll have our Adult Scavenger Hunt Friday night. Saturday, we are working with Teahouse and we will have an event Saturday for our families at the Teahouse. And then Monday, the foundation will have their golf tournament. So we're going to have a busy week, but we plan on ending that, starting first day of school, August 24th, and ending on Tuesday with our Giving Tuesday campaign. So anyway, just kind of keeping you up to date, so thank you.
What was the date of the golf tournament, Amy?
August 29th.
August 29th, thank you.
Monday at Cape Country Club.
Any other questions? All right. Next up, we have our Approval of Consent to Gen Items. This month, we have minutes of previous meetings, February 28th, 2022, payment of bills, updated 2223 academic calendar and the 202223 CTC calendar. Those were all sent out previously. A motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Lynn, Mr. Ritter, any discussion on any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Items are approved. Next up, we have our Business Items of the Month. First up, we have... Need a motion to consider the approval of the prospectus for Fire Science Program at CTC?
So moved.
Same.
Mr. Lynn, Mr. Ritter, discussion. Dr. Glass?
Dr. Lynn? So this is a new program they're wanting to start at the CTC and this is going to be in partnership with our fire department as well just so that we can continue to provide the staff one because we're also, we're going to be doing some different tax training with that program. It's really exciting. It's a two-year program.
Any questions? We are just like, here we go.
So once they complete that program, do they then attend the Fire Academy or do they, what do they?
I think this gives them their, if I acquire science certificate so that they can go and start working for the fire department.
So they can work directly for the fire department after they've seen this?
And they can go on and work, finish, get an associate's degree and then get a bachelor's as well if they wanted to. They'll become EMTs, so it takes them to that program.
Wow, that's great.
That's great.
And so the fire chiefs at both, Cape and Jackson Fire Chiefs helped solicit this or had their hands in it?
Yeah, they've been doing some training already with the fire department, probably what, you know, fire last year, year or two. They've been doing some training, EMT training, some other stuff with them already. So they wanted to begin this program. That's how this all kind of started.
So they'll be interlocked in the program and maybe cherry-picking, hopefully cherry-picking some graduates?
Oh, yeah, they're always out there. If you go out there throughout the week, the fire trucks are always lined up out there. They're taking full advantage of the CTC, EMT programs, and we do specialized training out there too.
First-day training, updating them with a variety of things. It's a good partnership.
Anyone have any questions? So the motion on the floor is to approve the prospectus for the Fire Science Program at the CTC. There's no further questions. If there's no further questions, comments, discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Program is approved. And next up is a motion to authorize a superintendent or his designated negotiated contract on behalf of the board to purchase textbook materials of the K through twelve mathematics program at a total cost of seven hundred twenty-three thousand four dollars and sixty-six cents. Have a motion.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter, discussion. Dr. Glass?
They don't give these textbooks away, I'm telling you. I tell you, outside of personnel cost, uh, the curriculum uh, is obviously is is one of our biggest expenditures and uh, E L A and mathematics is certainly the top two uh, that we have to budget for um on the cycle. So I always dread a little bit because, you know, it's kind of really, it's they're tough years to balance a budget when you get E L A and and mathematics. But Kristen, you want to say anything about the curriculum?
Um, it's obviously, the elementary one is a lot because every classroom teacher gets manipulatives and the whole shebang, like the teacher's kit and everything, whereas at secondary, you've only got what, six math teachers at junior high or something like that? So for both grades. So it's just not as many like teacher kits and all the manipulatives. It is multi-years, so um, for elementary, for K four, it is Blanchard has has a six-year agreement for the consumables and the online and all of that. And five twelve has a six-year agreement. And then because we are putting off implementation at the other four elementaries for one year, that's a delay and they're under a five-year agreement. So that they'll all expire at the same time that way. But we are asking to purchase it in one um one quote. We get a little more discount on it that way. They will hold those materials for me and not ship them until I'm ready to send them out to the buildings.
You should negotiate off that last four dollars and sixty-six cents.
I'd say they're fine.
They are a really good guy um, sending us like, I think I have a E L L this year that needed like eight new, eight student copies for some new kids that have come in. And she called the rep and the rep's like, yeah, I'll just send them to you. So it does look like a lot of money, but when we need something little here and there, they do just, I mean, most of the time, all of the reps, even if we haven't made big purchases from them, are pretty good. The ones that are not, we don't use anymore. So.
One of the things with just high school, they get materials and those type of things. We get digital licenses and they've worked with us in the past, giving us some free digital licenses as well. So when we have a bigger class in Algebra Two, they give us additional uh, licenses for that. So our reps that I think that we work with are, and our our teachers chose these uh, these vendors. They're they're very, very easy to work with. And when we, when we're in, they're they're easily handing an Alpha for it. But we are paying them seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So they should be that way.
So all these manipulatives and stuff, they can leverage on Canvas and incorporate that way, the digital side?
The digital version is. So in high school, it's different. In in seven, twelve, it's a lot different than case.
Elementary, they typically get like, each teacher gets a bin. Like when we adopted Math in Focus, I think it was multiple bins for each teacher. And so most of the manipulatives are a one-time purchase for each classroom. But then, you know, at elementary, we use consumables. So they're kind of like, they call them work texts. Um, it's like a textbook and a workbook all in one now. Um, and so the students can actually write directly on those pages. Does save us from having copies, but it also saves the kids from having a hardback textbook. And then worksheets are copies. It's all built into one book these days.
Sixth grade chose to do the workbooks and that's their text. We adopted six, six, eight, and then a nine, twelve curriculum, but they chose the same curriculum, the same vendor, Brawl Hill, Louisville. So but sixth grade felt that it was better that they actually had a uh, a workbook.
And then after seventh grade on up, there's just, it's all digital.
And they have a few workbooks. If they needed to make copies, they could.
Do they provide like just a few of the hard copy textbooks?
Yeah, we have, we do. We have a classroom set for, but they don't go home with the kids or anything like that because it's all on.
Right.
Any additional questions?
Just more curiosity. I guess how much does one textbook cost? Do you know?
Well, so I get it for like around six years and I would have to go look, but typically they're anywhere from, depending on what the book is, but seventy-five dollars to just under two hundred dollars, depending on what the book is and what level and things like that. But that's a six-year subscription to it. So that means if I'm getting it at the elementary level, I'm getting that mailed to me six times. And if it's at the secondary where it's digital, that means I'm, that I can assign student to that license for six years. So, yeah, I mean, it's it's expensive any way you cut it. But it does help me swallow a little better whenever you know that it's um, six years and not just a one year. You can't look at that as a hundred and fifty dollars for one year. It's going to be used for, you know, extended periods of time.
Like a calculus textbook, hard copy is probably about two hundred and fifty dollars.
And and the digital, it's updated every year. So if there's new materials or if there's something else to get to, it's nice if you get the updated version from year to year to year to year.
I don't feel like, I don't feel like it's going to be cheaper, the digital version, but at least you get the because like you said, we used to buy calculus textbooks, but you use the same textbook for six or seven years. So I guess you paid that two hundred dollars upfront, but you've used it for multiple years. Whereas now, I mean, it just is what it is.
For the calculators and there's some things that always were added to that too. So that's all included in when you purchase the digital version. But kids at younger ages, they need, they need, they need hard copy, they need manipulatives, they need, they don't.
We actually get both with it. Um, and they'll do a little bit online, but a lot of it, I mean, the manipulatives and the workbooks, they have to have like physical pieces for. The teachers will have access where they can throw it up on, you know, everything will be online for them so they can use the smart boards and things like that.
This is the last big one. We did two years in a row, so you know, maybe, let's just say.
And they're on like seventy-five.
Scienceism is nearly as expensive as folks next year.
So in elementary, they get a new workbook every year?
It's like a one year.
So you don't have people in there making hundreds of copies?
It's a consumable, like it's considerable.
Here, remember.
Once we get to the end of the series, we usually make copies.
The moms are always going to make copies for homeroom and they spend hours making copies and thousands of pages. You wonder why the copiers were always breaking down. All right. Any other questions? So the motion on the floor is to authorize a superintendent or his designated negotiated contract on behalf of the board to purchase textbook materials for the K twelve mathematics program at a total cost of seven hundred twenty-three thousand four dollars and sixty-six cents. There's no further questions, comments, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Curriculum is approved. Purchases. That concludes our business items for the evening. Does anyone on the board have any information proposals?
Just want to take a moment uh, to say thank you uh, to all of you for stepping up to serve. Um, it's real easy to to sit back and criticize those who do step up and serve. Uh, it's not at all easy to be the one who puts their name on the line and and dedicates their life to this. And so I want to thank each of you. Uh, Dr. Glass, it has been an absolute joy to watch you. You have connected with people uh, in ways that that have have benefited the district, have benefited our community, uh, and have quite frankly benefited public education. And I I really have enjoyed watching you work. To all the cabinet members, uh, thank you for everything that you do. Uh, it has been an absolute joy to watch you work. Uh, to all of our teachers, uh, our professional staff, uh, thank you uh, for everything. You uh, make our community better because of the work that you do. Our children are better off because of you. Uh, so thank you for that. Uh, Beth, thank you for 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 giving as good as you take. And uh, and I I can't tell you how much I am going to miss the camaraderie that we, the special camaraderie that we share. But I just, I I I can't tell you, years ago, uh, someone asked me, this was ten years before I ever ran for school board, asked me, he he called me up and he said, you know, I'm thinking about running for school board, what do you think? And I said, it's the worst job in politics. Because you're dealing with people's most precious possession. And so no decision you ever make will be good enough. Ten years later, I ignored my own advice. And ran for school board and the last nine years have been some of the most remarkable uh, learning experiences that I've had in my entire life. And so I'm incredibly grateful for that. Uh, the last thank you I want to say is is Kyle, uh, you were here before. I came along and have been here the entire time. And I want you to know how much I have appreciated the leadership that you have shown this district through the years. And uh, I can't tell you how much I uh, I I really have enjoyed working with you for the last nine years and all and all of you. But uh, so so thank you all and uh, keep up the good fight.
Thank you, Jeff. And if there's nothing else for the good of the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.